Ready? Okay, we now go to number thirty-six, two sixty to two seventy, King Street West, and two seventy-four to three twenty-two, King Street West. Purpose of the application is to alter the redevelopment plan for the seventy-four-story building, East Block, and eighty-four-story building, West Block, approved under site-specific by law fourteen eighty dash twenty seventeen, O M B, by changing the quantity and location of residential gross floor area, non-residential gross floor area, number of dwelling units, outdoor residential amenity space, podium height, projected permitted projections, floor plate areas, number and location of parking spaces, and permitted height of doors and windows. Maps three A, three B, three C, and three D are being revised as attached to this public hearing notice. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant. We have comments, email correspondence from transportation, planning, and heritage preservation, as well as reports from engineering, community planning, and strategic initiatives. Ms. Kovar.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Just checking, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thanks very much. So I'm here on behalf of the applicants, which are G.G. Duncan, Inc., which is one of the great Gulf group of companies, and Ed Mervish Enterprises Limited. Before I begin, can I just ask staff to pull up the architectural plans, and I think probably just the covering page to the drawing set? There we go. This shows you the, oh, there it goes, the current proposal before the committee of adjustment. This is the Frank Gehry Design Building, which we've been referring to as the Mervish Gehry Project on King Street. I suspect members of the committee are generally familiar with the project. It was approved back in twenty fourteen by city council and by the O M B, and at the time, the approval was for two towers of eighty-two and ninety-two stories. And what you see in the model there is you see the entire two blocks, which include these two towers, including all the heritage buildings on the property being preserved. And on the right-hand side there, what you're looking at is the Royal Alex Theater and the Princess of Wales Theater, and other heritage buildings are located on the west side of the new construction. So I put that up just to give you a little bit of context. So what has happened over the last few years since the approval? My client and Mr. Gehry's team and city staff have worked together through the site plan approval process, which is nearing completion at this stage, with the view to moving on to the marketing and construction stage of the project, and finally bring this iconic building proposal to fruition. There's a relatively long list of variances before you today, but they do break down into a few categories, and I'm hoping I can simplify it. Simplify it for you while we bed. So variances one and two, and I'm just following using your hearing notice, variance one and two refer to G F A. And what's important to note there is the total G F A is being reduced. It is being redistributed as between the two towers, but the overall G F A is going down from eighteen point one times the lot area modestly to eighteen point zero times the lot area. And there is no impact as a result of the redistribution of the G F A between the two towers. Variance three relates to the number of units, and there have always been approximately two thousand units in the proposal. The bylaw has one thousand nine hundred and fifty-three. We are proposing at the present time two thousand and thirty-eight. So it's a very modest increase, but we are still meeting and in fact exceeding the ten percent three-bedroom unit requirement in the zoning bylaw, and there is no impact in any respect from the modest increase in the unit count. Variance four relates to amenities.
Ms. Kovar, did you deal with variance number two?
One and two are all part of the G F A.
Oh, okay.
Issue. And again, it had to do with the redistribution of the unit, of the G F A between the two towers.
Okay, thank you.
So that was one and two. The unit count was number three. And that brings us then now to variance four, which has to do with amenity space. And again, the total amount of amenity space in the project on a per-unit basis, even accounting for the additional units in variance three, the total amount is being increased, not decreased. But there is, again, as between the buildings, a redistribution, and in one of the buildings, the outdoor is going down, but the indoor is going up and more than compensating for the decrease in the outdoor. There are a total of five floors, five entire floors within these two buildings, which are entirely or substantially being devoted to indoor and outdoor amenity space. So there is a significant supply, and as I say, more than that which was required by the bylaw in twenty fourteen. The next series of variances, starting at five and running all the way through to and including twelve, and then skipping over thirteen, but fourteen as well. So nine variances all relate to this issue. And maybe if we can pull back up the model, the photos of the model from that first page again off the drawing set, you can see the current proposal, you can see both towers, the one on the left-hand side, it's particularly obvious in this King Street face of the building. If you stand back so you can see the whole tower, you can see the tower, the other way, there we go. The tower is divided up into four kind of blocks, moving up the tower. Each block has a different footprint, a different dimensions, and they're all kind of spun or nudged offset one another, which is one of the elements that provides these buildings their interest. And both towers do the same thing. There were four blocks today. At the time of the original rezoning, there were six blocks. So the building has been streamlined and made articulated slightly differently in Mr. Gehry's current vision, which means all the building envelope drawings that are attached in plans three A, B, C, D, E, and F have to be replaced with a new set of drawings, now just maps three A, B, C, D. Because I have four blocks instead of six, I just need four maps instead of six. So everywhere in the zoning bylaw where there's a reference to maps three E and three F, that section needs to be varied, because there's no longer the need for a three E and an F. There's just the four maps, one to correspond with each of the four blocks. And so that's why there is a relatively long list of variances dealing with the height and envelopes, even though the building height is actually, it has not increased, and in fact, the number of stories has decreased in a measurable way. The east tower was approved at ninety-two stories, it is now eighty-two stories. And the west tower was approved at eighty-four stories, it is now seventy-four stories. So the building height has come down, but the heights of the various stages of the building have changed, because there's now four blocks instead of six. So that is variances five through twelve and variance fourteen. And that leaves two more variances at the end. Variance thirteen has to do with parking. Again, the parking has been redistributed between the two blocks on the site. The non-residential parking is not changing, and that includes the visitor, not changing. The car-share parking has been increased. The variance is triggered by a decrease in the resident parking, and so the proposed parking supply is now point one seven spaces per unit. That is well within the range of recent approvals in the area. There is a comprehensive parking rationale report prepared by B A Group, which you have in your file, and has been reviewed by city transportation and development engineering staff, and has been found to be acceptable by city staff. It also established this, that the proposed parking supply here will meet the marketing demand of the building in this location, and is also generally consistent with actual parking counts conducted by B A and other buildings in the downtown. So we are asking to have the resident parking supply reduced to point one seven per unit. And finally, the last variance relates to the definition of bicycle parking space, and it has to do with the dimensions of stacked bicycle parking spaces. And the only reason we're seeking this variance is to accord with the dimensions in bylaw five sixty-nine for stacked bicycle parking space dimensions. What we're asking here matches what's in the current bylaw five sixty-nine twenty thirteen, and it wasn't reflected in the original O M B approval. So we're just bringing that up to current standards. So the application came in to you together with a detailed covering letter from both fields, which outlines the extensive consultation which has taken place between my client and Mr. Gehry and his team and city staff. There was also a very well-attended community meeting hosted earlier this year by the planning department. So the community is certainly well aware of the proposed revisions to the plan, and I'm not aware of any community opposition to the proposal. As noted in the memo from community planning, approximately a hundred people participated in the public meeting, and the revisions were well received. The local councillor has obviously been consulted throughout this, and the application has been supported by city staff. And I would take a second to thank them for all of the time and effort that they put into this over the last several years, because this application has been a while coming now. I do note that staff took the somewhat unusual step and actually stated in their in their report to you that they are supporting the applications or the application before you, as opposed to simply saying, if you choose to approve it, please attach the following condition. And I think that speaks not only to the merits of the application, but also to the process that we've been through over the last couple of years. So planning staff or community planning staff are recommending one condition of approval in their September sixteenth memo, and development engineering are recommending two conditions of approval in their August twenty-third memo. And I note that supersedes an earlier August tenth memo from development engineering. So the three conditions being collectively recommended by city staff are all acceptable to my client, and we support the imposition of those conditions on any approval today. So I rushed through that, because I know you're running late, and I've got a five-minute limit, but if you have questions, I'm obviously happy to answer them.
Yes, Jim.
Oh, yeah, I have a question. I have no problem understanding the content and the extent of its provisions. My question is, I thought that have you already got the site plan approval finished? And then my question is, when, at which point you will go through to committee of adjustment, getting all these provisions, or whether this should be looked after through the S P A process? And my understanding, which is maybe outdated, or I don't know, when you start ignoring, is that I thought there was a time, a record, a pivot, or after you get S P A approval, you cannot go back for the future within a time period? Is that true, or?
Well, I guess there's two questions you've got there. I'll deal with the second one first.
Okay.
You're thinking of the two-year prohibition. So when a zoning bylaw is passed, you can't go for minor variances within two years. You get variances. There's no further two-year prohibition on going back. So if theoretically, if another variance was required, there would be no prohibition on going back within two years for another variance, although obviously, nobody on this call wants to be doing that. So we are well into the site plan approval process. The application was submitted in twenty sixteen, and it's noted on page three of the community planning report that although we're well into it and we're almost done, there are still other unrelated issues that need to be addressed through that ongoing process. But staff note, and I'm quoting here, "It's not anticipated that these will impact the variances being requested." So to answer your first question specifically, we are not finished with site plan approval, but we're far enough into it that we all have a very high level of confidence that the kinds of detailed changes we're now dealing with are not going to affect any zoning matters.
Yes. And the reason why I ask is that when we, as a panel, we're only looking at minor variances, sometimes with these three complex buildings and complex application, it's sort of overwhelming to us, to me, to actually look at everyone that is in detail. So I just thought maybe some of this is a normal way that we'll go strictly, straight to committee of adjustment when you want to revise from them. What I'm trying to say is I cannot understand why S P A cannot deal with these provisions.
Well, I think the answer probably is this bylaw, I mean, you have the entire zoning bylaw in your file, and it's about twenty pages long, just eyeballing it here in front of me, I haven't counted, but it's a very, very, very detailed shrink-wrapped document, and it does contain a bit more detail than one might typically find in a site-specific zoning bylaw, and because of the level of specificity in so many areas, unfortunately, there were areas where we just had to get variances, simply because of the way the bylaw's been drafted.
Yes, Larry.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Chair. Ms. Kovar, thank you very much for a great overview and summary presentation. I did read all the material, but your overview was very helpful and very simplified it in my mind quite a bit. And I am heartened, as I suspect we all are, that there has been ongoing extensive consultation with city staff on this one, and their support, and I think everyone involved would like to get this project rolling. So I just have one question, but looking for clarification, because the way I understand your presentation, overall, we're seeing less G F A, we're seeing fewer stories, and less parking, but more units. Can we infer from that, then, that the units, as proposed now, are smaller than they were before? Or is there a different mix and match between singles and doubles and triples? I mean, it's not necessarily germane to our deliberations, I'm more just curious as to the, what's the outcome of all this, these changes?
Well, your, I mean, your comment is right. The G F A has come down slightly, and the unit count has gone up slightly, so on average, over the entire two thousand and thirty-five units, the average unit size will be notionally smaller, it's not going to be a lot smaller, but it will be slightly smaller per unit. What I did touch on is that the bylaw does have a minimum percentage of requirements for three-bedroom units, and those are actually being met. I think we're actually at eleven percent three-bedroom units, which is slightly higher than the ten percent that's required. But on average, if you looked at all two thousand and thirty-five units, it will be slightly smaller. I confess I haven't done the math, but it will be slightly smaller than the previous average.
Okay, thank you.
Joanne.
Thank you very much. Ms. Kovar, could you just give us some context with respect to how the comments from strategic initiatives, policy, and analysis, July twenty-sixth memo, have been considered as part of this process in your conversations with the planning department? Because there's a number of indications in there that they don't feel that it adequately supports some of those things, and I just, planning hasn't really noted it in their comment, but I would just be interested to hear your observations with respect to that discussion.
Yeah, I guess the memo refers to a couple of things. It refers to the city's growing guidelines, which in fairness to staff, were matters that were addressed at the time of the original zoning approvals. The question of affordable housing was always addressed, was also addressed at the time of the initial zoning approvals, and what was secured instead of affordable housing units in this building was a contribution to the city, with funds to be spent in a variety of areas, including social housing in this particular ward in the city. That was two point five million dollars. It's been escalated since the section thirty-seven agreement was signed in twenty seventeen, but that would be the way that both categories of issues raised in the memo would be dealt with, and will continue to be dealt with in accordance of council's initial approval.
Thank you. Just one other thing. I just want to confirm that with respect to the parking, you're indicating that the evolving thoughts with respect to parking spaces is supportive of the basically two-hundred-and-eighty-one reduction in spaces that is proposed here versus what was initially envisioned when the bylaw was first dealt with?
The change is to, as I indicated, there isn't a change to the non-resident parking, there's a couple more car-share spaces. The substantive change is the parking supply at the time of the original rezoning application back in twenty fourteen was three point three spaces per unit. It's now proposed to be one point seven. And I see the table of contents to the B A report that's up on the screen there, but B A has assessed this in terms of fulfilling official plan, policy goals, provincial policy goals, but specifically looking at demand and need and the city's current practice in setting parking requirements for large downtown projects.
That's fine. I just wanted to confirm that I had understood your initial submissions in support of the reduction. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Panel, are we ready? If you don't have any further questions, are we ready for a motion? Yes, Larry.
Yes, Chair. On behalf, I think we all agree on this one. It's a very interesting project, and one that has a great deal of scrutiny from a great deal of people on, and I, again, I appreciate the overview presentation. I think it satisfies any kind of lingering concerns that we might have. I'm, it's in the interest of all the city and all the stakeholders to proceed with this one, so I'm prepared to move a motion to approve the variances as proposed, subject to planning report dated September sixteen.
Engineering conditions as well. I think that's.
Are there engineering conditions?
Yes, engineering.
There was an August twenty-third email.
Yeah, it's two, two conditions.
Okay, and subject to the August twenty-third engineering conditions. Thank you, Joanne.
Can we?
I'll second that, yeah.
Yeah, second it. All in favor? Thank you, Ms. Kovar. Everything's changed now. Thank you. Number thirty-seven, twenty-nine Ave Road. If I can find it here. Purpose of this application is to construct a three-story detached dwelling with a front porch, an integral basement garage, a rear ground-floor deck, a rear second-story balcony, an east-side third-story balcony, and a rear basement walkout is approved by minor variance decision A one-one-four-two slash twenty T E Y. The current application is necessitated to correctly identify a side yard setback for a rear deck to the detached dwelling as cited in variance number ten below. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant and a report from urban forestry. Mr. Rose.
Yes, Lord Rose, three eighty-eights Spudine Road.
So this is just a technical thing, because it's already been approved, except for something that was incorrectly identified?
Yeah, so staff is highlighting it. I guess when they copied the variances, they missed the last part of the sentence. So we've been granted a one-point-five, one-point-two meter side yard setback in this side yard for a terrace. It's always shown on the drawing, it's actually one-point-five-two. Nobody has any concerns. There's also a request for a refund, an additional fee, since this was a city error, I assume. I don't know if that has to go through your committee.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The refund has been approved by the secretary treasurer.
Okay.
Okay, so, all right, I don't think we need to hear anything more. Panel, do you have any questions, or do we have a motion of approval? Yes, Jim.
I can move a proposal, subject to forestry, urban forestry, condition one.
Joanne, you second it? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. You have your approval, sir. Number thirty-eight. Thirty-one and thirty-three, Lonsdale Road. It's to obtain a consent to sever the property into two residential lots, as well as the variance is required for the two lots. The existing two-story semi-detached dwelling will remain as is on the conveyed lot, as described in the sense consent application. And then the second variance is the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling will remain as on the retained lot described in the consent application. So, all right. Mr. Shakiri.
Abhi Shakiri, three twenty-six Shepherd Avenue. Good evening.
Good evening. So do I understand that there's two existing buildings, you're just want them severed, and you really have, well, you do have some variances, though. Are they existing conditions?
Yes, sir. These two units have been built in integrity, and this is a technical severance as indicated on the E S year form.
Okay, all right. So perhaps you could tell us a little more, because you have some opposition.
Sure. This, the two units have been, gone to committee of adjustment two years ago, twenty nineteen. We have an approval from the committee of adjustment on February of twenty nineteen. Subsequent to that, we have granted the building permit. The construction was commenced on or about mid-twenty nineteen, and now it is nearly finished, and we need to sever these two lots. It's a technical variance. One of the reasons is we cannot get the services for the water and for one of them, and therefore we have basically asked for these severance. And if these two lots are considered separate, on separate lots, then we will need some variances. And it doesn't mean that we are going to be doing changes. If these two units are considered on the separate parcel of lands, then those variances technically appear, and we need to ask for those variances from the committee of adjustment. I have no further comment, and if there's any question, I'd be more than glad to ask.
So I don't understand, Mr. Shakiri, you mean you built two, two units on one lot?
Yes, we built two units on one lot. The zoning of this property allowed for two units. So based on the zoning, two units is allowed. It's on the current zoning, and now these two units are built, and we're trying to sever the lot, so we get two separate lots. With the same existing buildings.
Yeah, but one of the reasons you want the severance is because you can't get services if it isn't severed?
Yes.
Okay. All right, panel, do you have any questions? Yes, Jim?
I get more confused about the surface. Do, I thought the both of them require a variance that do not have the surface. I, I, what is required and what you cannot comply about this, variance number four and variance number six on twenty eight C? I get more confused as you say that.
Um, not quite sure if I understood the question, but what?
Are the underground surfaces or the, okay, okay, twenty eight C, number six.
Okay.
You see, for example, yeah, number six. I do not understand what is inadequate, what do you, it says there's no surfaces, operational... I do not understand what, what is inadequate. What do you, it says there's no surfaces, operational in this case does not have existing surfaces. I'm not too sure what that means.
I, well, I, I must admit that my understanding from that variance is not, um, is not that, but basically it's a very valid question that you're raising, but we did apply for a zoning review and that, that variance showed up. And, uh, the, the, what, what we do know that we cannot get two services for these two houses and they're gonna just, Hydro is gonna just give us one service. So in order to get separate services for these two properties, we do need that variance and we do, we do need this technical severance.
I see. So it's same as number, uh, number variance number four in the, in 38B2 is the same variance. So you mean that you cannot have two separate, so you have to share. That's why it's adequate. You, you do not have any visual services. That's what it means, right?
Yes, I, I, I'm not quite sure if it can be even shared because we were trying to do that as well, but this is, I, I have to add that back at the time when we originally got the committee of adjustment approval on these two units, the ECS asked us to, um, to obtain two different services, two, two separate services. And because of that, we paid the, um, the development charges. So these houses, the, the new lot that is created, that we're trying to create here already has paid the development charges. So everything has been done except that technical variance that we are after in order to get those two services separate for the houses. So whether it is an oversight at the, at the first hearing or, or the, uh, something technically that we have to deal with it now, we do need to technically sever them to get the separate services for these two units. These are two completely separate units, although they are attached. So it's a semi-detached unit as we stand and it's, uh, we are trying to basically sever the lot so we get two separate lots.
Oh, okay. Can I interpret what you said? Is it, this is the first time to sever the, to add the end to the lots and then you can apply separate services to for, to, to each of them?
Yes, that's correct. And I was surprised that originally we even had to, had to pay the development charges at the first original committee of adjustment because this, this was technically one lot, but they asked us to pay the development charges, which is substantial. But my clients actually paid that and now they need to technically sever the lot.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yes, Joanne?
I have a question. So are these, these are built. Are they occupied?
No, not occupied. We do not have the final inspection on it and we do not have the services, so they cannot be occupied.
So the services aren't done at all or are they done and joined into one, one, only one connection?
The services, the services are not done and we cannot do that until, I mean, we can get one service, not two services. And that service can go only on one property, not two properties.
This didn't come up at the time you applied for the building permits because you're saying you paid to, paid to-
I, I remember, I remember the, the engineering commented that we anticipate, I mean, that, that's what I, what I recall from the report back at the time that they said, "We anticipate that this has to undergo a technical severance later on." As such, you have to, um, get separate services for each of them and we had to actually pay the development charge for, charges for the one that were, was supposed to be a, a severed lot.
Okay, but for all intents and purposes, these, these, these are, this is a done deal. The buildings are there?
That's correct, ma'am, yes.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Holliday?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, uh, I just want to comment off the top, um-
But could we have your name and address, please?
A, absolutely. It's Josh Holliday with two L's. Uh, you've got 380 McPherson Avenue in Chorongstow.
Yes, can we have your comments, sir?
Uh, I just want to note off the top, the arrogance of, of completely building something and then asking for variances after the fact. And I just want to comment on the, the definition of, of a minor variance. Uh, when it comes to the, the frontage, we want to reduce the, uh, frontage from, uh, 60% to 30%, which is like me, uh, being allowed to build a six-story building and then adding three stories and asking afterwards if it's okay. But my, uh, main concern with this building is the, uh, the deck. It's already been built and I believe you have photographs. I think in the initial, um, document you have as part of the greater file, it's cropped. So I believe one of the, uh, assistants emailed you photos that are on crop so you can see the, the, the actual balcony and how close it is to property line. And in this case, uh, it's not just a, a, a variance, it's a complete elimination of the, that distance between the, uh, the lot line and, and the balcony. They've gone from almost a meter to zero meters in, in the balcony. They've basically perched on top of our fence, looking into our backyard. And I, and I know there's some other objection letters that, that have mentioned the same thing. It, it just, they're sort of spinning to the face of the committee of adjustments.
Yeah, so it's, uh, variance number three in 38B that you're concerned about, the balcony?
Uh, the, the main concern would be, uh, uh, variance number, uh, six.
In 38B? 38B?
Uh, I believe it's at the platform that, that name was, um, that one.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a rear, uh, deck balcony type thing.
Yeah, okay.
And, uh, we are to the, the, uh, the, um, east side of the building.
Okay. All right. Have anything further, Mr. Holliday?
Um, do you have the pictures available to you just so you can do a visual, uh, example of, of what the balcony looks like?
Are they in the file?
Sorry, can you repeat that one more time?
Um, do you have, I, I believe it was emailed to you because in this file, the, the pictures are attached to my, my, um, objection of the crops or you can't see the balcony at all. So I was told that, uh, one of your associates emailed, uh, earlier this afternoon that the, the pictures in full. Let me just get the name of the person maybe who emailed it here. Adam Borcella, I think. I believe that sent the photos.
We're just trying to get the pictures up.
Uh, sure. They, they would have come separately this afternoon, separate emails to the committee members.
Are these, are these images?
One more time, sorry?
Is this what you're looking for, Mr. Holliday?
That's my, that's my initial email, but, uh, and, and I think if you scroll down, you'll see images. But the problem with those images that they, that they included in your package is, um, that, uh, they're cropped and this might be them here, yeah. These are the ones, yeah. So there you can see the, the, the monolith next to our house there. Um, we, we, we've got their pellets and that's the balcony that's already been built, that's essentially almost perched on top of the, the fence line, looking directly into our backyard. And then they're asking for, it's, well, asking, they're, they've already done it, but for the, the zero, uh, I mean, this, that would have been almost a full meter away from, from the line.
Yeah.
And I, I believe there's another letter of concern that raises the same thing from, uh, 45 Lonsdale.
So it's, so the difference is 0.4 meters?
Uh, I'm reading here as you number six, uh, at the east side of the lot, some platform, we'll coach, uh, because, uh, you hear, um, so they're requesting a setback of zero, I think, versus, versus nine. Oh, oh, sorry, under number three, that's one I'm, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm requesting variance number three. I believe that-
Okay, so it's supposed to be setback 0.9 meters and it's setback 0 meters. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah.
All right.
So almost, almost like there's a 100% removed, the, the distance.
All right, thank you. So we'll go back to Mr. Shakiri?
Uh, is that, uh, zero, um, meter setback is, um, referring to the, um, to the balcony or, or porch that is, uh, in the middle, not, uh, not the one that is on the east side? So the one on the east side has a setback of 0.45 meter. But where you see any setback referred to as zero meter, that belongs to the, to the line in it that is going to be adjoining these two lots. That as far, can comment on the, on the, the quantity of the variance. However, as I mentioned before, this, uh, deck, um, is already constructed. It is constructed under permit and, um, we just need a technical variance to authorize that because of the severance. So that, that, um, like the, the existing of that deck is, is a legally, legally existing deck. We are just technically needing to, um, to separate two lots and, um, that appears as a variance on a zoning notice.
So, Mr. Shakiri, were these variances approved?
No, these variances weren't approved. That's before you for approval, but the reason for these variances are all technical. That relies to the fact that these two lots, it's a one lot. We want to make it two lots. When it becomes two lots, then some of these pre-existing elements of these houses are going to be considered as variance.
Yeah, I understand that, but you, but you built them and now they don't comply with the zoning bylaws and you're asking us to prove it and telling, to approve it and you're telling us it's a technical variance because you, you gotta separate a technical severance. But what about the variances? They don't seem to be, to me, to be technical if they don't comply with the zoning bylaw.
So let, let me explain again. This house, both of the units, these, both of, both of these units have been constructed under a building permit. So that, that, those two rear decks or any other components are existing right now on that lot. But it's one lot as we stand. So there will be a line, an imaginary line or whatever we call it, is going to be separating these two lots. If these two lots are considered two separate lots, then for an existing, um, uh, building on those two lots, we will have some variances. We are not going to be doing any change. We're not going to be doing any alteration. And whatever you can see on these drawings already built and is already a legal existence component.
I don't, I don't, I don't-
We are here to get just the severance. We are here to get just the severance. And when we sever these two lots, the zoning department believes that there will be some other variances because of the existing, the existing components of the buildings on, on these two lots. So I'm not sure if I answered your question.
So I just ask one clarification then. So is your, I understand the point about the, um, you know, where the line would be if it was severed. But is, are you saying that the platform or deck off the main floor, second story, abutting the fence line, that, that, um, distance between the deck and the property of Mr. Holliday does not, does not need a variance and needs the provisions of the bylaw?
Um, I don't think so. I think we need it only for the, uh, for the deck that is between number 31 and 33. The other one-
So you're, so, so your answer is that you can build a deck as of right that close to the lot line, um, to Mr. Holliday's property?
Uh, 45 centimeters from Mr. Holliday's property, uh, we can build a, a deck and that complies, yes.
Okay, so that's what I was asking, clarification. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't understand, Mr. Shakiri. When we get an application for severance, uh, we either, uh, if we agree to the severance, then we look at all the variances and, and this is, you've got these variances. The variances are before us to decide whether we're going to approve them or not. It's not, we're not just dealing with the severance, which is what you're asking us for. I, I think we have to deal with each variance as well. I don't think because you've got a building permit and you built them, that makes them legal. I may be mistaken, but that's what I think.
Well, that's part of the procedure. We are not basically, um, saying that there is a variance. The building department says that there is a variance for the existing components of the house. I, I just emphasize that existing thing. So when we go for the severance and as it's mentioned, if you, if you look at the, uh, the, the ECS correspondence, it says it's a technical variance. That technical variance means that we do not want to change any of those buildings. It's, uh, it, with the legality of these two lots is one lot, now it becomes two lots. There is no change on the building, but when it's two lots, then they measured that created property line in the middle is going to create some proximity to this existing law, uh, existing buildings and therefore some variance is created again for the existing components. I know it is somehow confusing for everybody and including me, to be honest. And we haven't done anything like this before and we have, um, been talking to the zoning department. I spent a lot of time with, with the examiner, going through these, um, these variances. And they mentioned that if this is considered as two, I mean, if these two units, pre-existing, considered as semi-detached on one lot, these variances do not apply. But if these are, there are two lots with the same building without any change, then there will be some variances which are technical. Basically, we, we are not going to be doing anything with those variances here. Those variances are pre-existing if this is two lots and that's what we are trying to do. And there is no, as you can see, there is no, uh, objection from the planning department. And, um, I'm sure that if, if, uh, there is any, um, any concern, the planning department always, uh, have, uh, have, uh, some report for the, for the severance cases, but you do not see that here because it's, it's technical.
But they've asked for severances. They've asked for variances. So, Mr. Shakiri, we're going to go into committee. We're going to discuss this. I'm not sure I agree with you. I'm not sure I agree with you. Uh, Sabrina, do you?
It's through you, Mr. Chair, what is up on the screen right now is the previous decision to construct a pair of new semi-detached dwellings with integral garages on the subject lot. The decision was approved on February the thirteenth, twenty nineteen with three variances.
Okay, so how do these variances differ from the ones that were approved? This is for each lot?
Yeah, so I think that if you look that they, that, that, before they decided that they wanted to sever the properties, the previous decision allowed for a lesser lot frontage of twelve point two. Now they're asking for six point one, six point one. And the, um, in the garage variance results from the fact that now you're looking at six point one versus twelve point two. Depth is the same and the ethessai is the same for each of those dwellings as was for the, when they weren't asking for a severance. And I think some of the other variances being requested as a result of asking for the severance deal with se- distance to what is now the lot line between the two, which will be between the two buildings.
But what about, what about the, uh, uh, variance number three that Mr. Holliday's pointed out? Where the rear deck would, would be located zero meters from the east side lot line when it should be point nine, where the bylaws says point nine?
But I, that, that is, I, if I'm, and I may be wrong, so please correct me if somebody's right. That's the deck that is on, on the, um, one of the semis and will, will abut the other semi. It's not the deck that abuts, um, the neighbor. So that's why it's zero.
Okay, but then there's six, so I may have the wrong, the front platform will encroach point four meters into the required front yard setback and will be located point five meters from the east side lot. All I'm saying is it seems to me there's some variances that were not caught. And, and now because they're severing them, the, the, and they built the thing, these variances have to be dealt with by us.
Oh, I agree, it, it tri- a, a lesser lot frontage is triggering different variances.
Definitely, yes, can I tell you, it is a sequence of events, uh, Mr. Chairman? And I think that because you, as this was built before, they only have three variances, which were four. But when you, when, when all these additional variances only occur when they were forced to sever, sever the property because they could not get two separate surfaces, uh, uh, with, in single lot, right? So technically they have to have two lots and then they can get two services going in. And I think that, that is sort of like going back and, but going back, by going back, you get additional, it's kind of understandable that they will get additional variances because of lot line change and suddenly become, uh, attached, suddenly attached rather than just, uh, 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 one lot with two units on it, right?
Yes, I, I agree with, uh, both of those, I, I think Chair, just it gets always triggered by a new lot line that, uh, bisects the, uh, former semis, I don't have any problem with that. I, I, I did question the one variance about depth because the depth variance is the same in the original approval versus, and it's worded exactly the same as, as in the new one, so I don't, I didn't know why you needed, uh, new depth variances for the, the new severed lots because it's exactly the same, but it doesn't hurt, I guess, if it's the same, it's not undermining it at all.
Well, I think, I think because it was one lot, now it's gonna be two lots.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's what Joanne was saying, is that, that, that's mostly what triggers all these technical variances. I think that was what the agent was trying to reflect too, and I think, you know, the neighbors.
Yeah, but there's some, but I think.
The neighbors concerned, right, I mean, the neighbors concerned about the, the deck that, I guess, uh, was built as of right given, uh, its proximity to the, to the lot line, it doesn't sound like that's contravening any, uh, bylaw.
I, 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 I don't, I don't think so, I think there's some variances that are caused by the severance of the lot and divided into two lots and now you've got a lot, uh, uh, lot lines between the two houses. But also because you built stuff, you have other variances, you may have other variances that, that are too close to the lot line, uh, like the one by, uh, overlooking Mr. Holliday's backyard. I don't know which one it is, but it seems to me, but because you're now dealing with the houses built, et cetera, may have triggered more variances and not just the ones caused by the severance.
Well, I think that's, I think that's, I think that's, I think that's true, Chair, I think with respect to the deck next to Mr. Holliday's property, when we asked the applicant directly with respect to that, he's, he said on that deck that it meets the bylaw requirements and didn't need a variance. The deck variance between the two is something to be considered, that's basically zero lot line. One of the things that gets triggered with the severance, which is new, is that they need a variance for a vehicle entrance through the front main wall when the minimum frontage of, of lot is less than seven point six meters. So that wasn't needed when it was one lot at two point two, but now it, it, although it's built, it's a new variance because the, uh, the separated lots are six point one each. So that's an example of one of the new variances that's triggered.
Yeah, but that's triggered by the severance, uh.
Yes.
But some of the other ones, too close to the lot line, not between the, not the lot line between the two semis, but the lot line next to Mr. Holliday's property, for example, and maybe on the other side, uh, is triggered because they, because of what they built, I don't think it's got anything to do with the severance.
May, I mean, I think that's the one that's tripping everybody up, Chair, so it, it's severance number three, or, sorry, variance number three, under, uh, thirty-eight A. So maybe we can just focus in on that one and try and pull that apart a little bit. Uh, because I think, I'm not entirely sure exactly, uh, which lot line that's referring to. And I don't know, maybe someone can, uh, figure out, because it talks about.
It's the east lot line.
The east lot line, so which, which lot line is the east lot line?
It's the, it's the, it's the east lot line if you consider it severed, so it's the deck on the, what would be number thirty-three.
There you go, so that's what you were saying earlier, so the, the, the variance is in respect of the proximity of the deck to the adjacent semis, not Mr. Holliday's property.
Yeah, the deck at number thirty-one, the applicant's agent is indicating that that deck at thirty-one, which is next to Mr. Holliday's property, that that sep- that, um, setback is permitted under the bylaw and does not need a variance whether or not it was a severed lot or not a severed lot.
Right, so Chair, I think that's getting at your concern over Mr. Holliday's comments, is that.
So where, is there a, is there a variance under thirty-one dealing with that? So we don't have a variance?
There isn't one, the submission was there isn't one required.
Correct.
Um. Yeah, well, there isn't a, a, a variance for thirty-one. That's thirty-one.
That, there, wasn't required.
Yeah, okay. So what is number six, where it says the front platform will encroach point four meters into the required front yard setback and will be located point five meters from the east side lot? That's in the front?
Yes.
So that's not what Mr. Holliday is talking about, so, Mr. Holliday, are you on the line?
I am indeed, yes.
So could you tell us what variance you think applies to the, uh, deck you're worried about?
Well, I think it's, it's, it's certainly clarified, I think, that, uh, in number six, that they are requesting, uh, that, when they refer to the east side lot line, there's some confusion, I think, because, because as of now, pre-severance, there, there, the only east side lot line is between our property and their property, but, uh, if there is a severance, then the, the east side could be referred to as the east side of thirty-three Longstale and, and that makes sense, that it would be, uh, zero meters away because it's, it's right next to the other dwelling. Uh, I haven't measured on it, don't know for sure, how, if, if, if it's in compliance with, with, on, on our side and your side, it just, it does look very close and it's, it almost seems like it's perched on top of our fence, but, but I'm, I'm not sure if it's a violation of, of any.
Well, there does, there doesn't seem to be a variance for it.
No.
And, and the, and, and this is, uh, um, this is done by the zoning, zoning department, not by Mr. Shakiri or his client, so, uh.
Yes.
It, it may be that it, it must comply in that case.
Yeah.
Uh, Chair, I wonder, uh, in regard to that concern, whether a helpful suggestion might be, as we've done with other, uh, variances for decks, that we might impose a condition that, um, those decks, uh, be, uh, shrouded in, um, privacy screening. I think that's a reasonable condition for us to impose, given the adjacent neighbors' concerns about overlook.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, I think we can impose that. Okay, so we have to deal with the, uh, severance first and then we have to deal with the variances. So, do we have a motion for approval of the, for consent to sever?
Yes, sure, Chair, I'm happy to move that, uh, motion to, for approval to, uh, uh, consent for severance of lots.
Okay, and at this.
Are they subject to the standard, uh, engineering conditions or?
So, uh, forestry number one for, for severance, F one.
Yeah, well, that's on the variances, right, not on the, the variance or the severance?
Yes, no, that's for the A, for some reason, that's for the severance.
Just for the severance?
Yeah, and they have, we have, uh, uh, forestry condition for the other ones, yeah.
Okay, so let's approve the severances as well at this time. So you're moving for approval of the severances, of the variances?
I think forestry num- sorry, uh, Yim said forestry number one is in relation to severances.
Number one for thirty-eight A is forestry number one and engineering conditions for severance.
For both, yeah.
Okay, so the consent is subject to the engineering conditions and the variances are subject to, uh, forestry condition number one, is that right?
No, uh, let me do this, let, let me say this, uh, the severance has a forestry condition number one. And thirty-eight B have a forestry condition number three times two, I do not know what that means, but that's what is on the notice. Uh, and.
I think it means for both the variance applications, times two.
Yeah.
Okay, so F three for, for B and C, yeah.
I think there's a planning condition.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Sorry, what was the planning condition, Joanne?
It's privacy screen, yeah.
Yeah, no, but Joanne said there's a planning condition, I, I missed that.
Yeah, that is, yes, that is, uh, oh, because the next number, I do not have the.
Is that in the sub?
Oh, wait a minute. No, no. I don't have any other conditions.
Oh, you're muted, Joanne.
I stand corrected then, maybe I have it written down incorrectly.
Okay, so, Yim, could you repeat your motion?
Uh, it's Larry's motion.
Oh, well, you can have it, you can have it.
But you were correcting it, you were, so you, you go ahead and tell us exactly what we should be doing. We can, first of all, the consent.
I'd like to move a motion for thirty-eight A, uh, a severance subject to forestry condition number one and the development engine, uh, uh, conditions for severance. And, uh, and also move a motion to approve thirty-eight B and C, uh, there will, there are no conditions for that.
Um, I thought we were gonna talk about privacy screening on the.
Oh, yes, yes, that one, now, see, I, I don't remember, and, uh, so we privacy screen on, um, which one?
I suggest all the way around because the overlook is quite substantial.
I think so, eh?
Yeah.
So, uh, on all the edges of the second floor balcony, uh, of, of B and C.
And then the forestry condition number two on both of them?
Yes.
Through you, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, urban forestry has only requested, uh, condition number one for thirty-eight A.
Yeah, that, I think that's what I.
Which is the consent.
Yeah, so there's no other forestry condition, I didn't have a note of any other.
Not that I see, no.
Okay, all right, so do we have a second or for the motion? Yes, Larry, all in favor? All right, do you have your approval, sir? After we sorted through it all, number thirty-nine, twenty-nine forty-six St. Clair Avenue East.
This is the one that has the planning condition I was looking forward in my notes.
Yeah, so this one is also to obtain, the purpose is to obtain a severance, a consent to sever the existing residential lot into two undersized residential lots. Um, and then we have the variances, the, um, first lot is, the, the first lot that's severed is to construct, the purpose is to construct a new two-story detached dwelling with a front integral garage, a side basement walkout, a rear ground floor deck and a rear second-story balcony on the retained lands. Uh, part two, I believe, created through application, B oh oh four two slash twenty-one T E Y. And the next, uh, lot has variances, purpose of the application to construct a new two-story detached dwelling with a front integral garage, a side basement walkout, a rear ground floor deck and rear second-story balcony on the conveyed lands. Part one, created through application, B zero zero four two slash twenty-one T E Y. And with these applications, we have, uh, materials submitted by the applicant and reports from engineering, uh, urban forestry and planning. Okay, and we have Mr. Shahid Navavati.
Yes, sir, I'm your, my name is Shahid Navavati and I'm the agent for, uh, this particular proposal.
Okay, so could you tell us about it, please?
That, uh, we are severing the lots and building two homes for father and daughter, uh, this particular property. And, uh, after the lots are severed, the lots are no smaller or larger than all most of the lots around that area, including all the neighbors to a distance of around six, I think, six units over there. So for the lots. So for the lots are of the same size in that area, we are not increasing any, uh, we are not, we are not in a smaller lot, but because of the smaller, small size of all the lots over there, any development is going to cause, is going to trigger a variance because the, then the lots are pretty narrow, all in that vicinity. So the basic requirements from the planning department have been taken care of. Basic requirements from the community planner have all been, we've accepted all their conditions, and we will rechange the redesign, the whole, whole structure, and redone the planning according to the community planner's advice as well. So the most, most of the variances, almost all the variances are, have got, uh, presidencies in that particular vicinity, and I have in my application, in my presentation, given all those details as well. So we have verbally, the neighbors are supportive to us. We've not had any issues with anyone pointing at, any, any issues coming out of our proposal.
Any questions, panel? All right.
Just a quick one, Chair, I just wanted, I mean, there was a previous decision on this application on this property that was twenty sixteen, and I'm presuming it didn't proceed. Was that a previous owner?
Uh, maybe a previous owner, but since the time the buying clients have taken this property, this is the first time we are approaching the city and the coming of adjustments.
So they, your current client bought after twenty sixteen?
Yes, sir, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Yes, can we have your name and address, sir?
Uh, my name is Eugenio Jim Ferrari, I live at fifteen Homestead Avenue. I have a few concerns about this building that's going on behind my backyard.
Okay, tell us what your concerns are.
My concern is that if they're going to build two buildings on this one lot, are they going to be putting sump pumps there? Because there was some previous property built on Homestead Avenue here that had problems with the sump pumps.
Sir, we're, sir, we don't have any authority to deal with sump pumps or construction or things like that. You have to deal with, that's a building department responsibility. We only deal with these variances.
Okay, so my, my concern is the decks, like how, like are they going to be building two decks?
Well, they're gonna, they're gonna be building in accordance with the plans that they have filed with the committee, with the committee. Is there any variance relating to the, to decks? Yes, number nine? There's, there's a platform that they're gonna put in, and it's going to encroach a certain degree, and they're asking for a variance with respect to that. That's on one of the buildings, I don't know whether there's another one. So they are gonna put it in, put in platforms, again, number nine, and the other variances too. So, um, what is your concern with respect to the decks?
Like how far back are they gonna go? Are they just gonna build a small deck, or is it a big deck?
Uh, it doesn't look like, they're gonna build apparently a deck as of right. The size will be as of right, it's going to be closer to the side lots, et cetera. But the deck seems to be of the size approved by the, set forth in the bylaw, which is four meters square.
Okay, so my, my, so that first question, I gotta go with the building about the sump pumps, right?
Yes.
And, so I gotta call the city and ask for the building about this?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. and Mrs. Beretta?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Fabiola Beretta. I, I am the property owner of the house on West, two-nine four St. Clair Avenue East. And my concern is about item number eight, where the setback is, should be one point two, and in this case, they're requesting variance for one, for point forty-five meters.
Yes.
Which assuming is too narrow. It's gonna be very close to my property, my, my tenant would not have a view of the street anymore.
Your what? Your tenant will not have a view of the street?
Yeah, I don't live in the house, it's my, my property, and I rent the home.
Yeah? So I don't understand what you mean, they won't have a view of the street?
I don't like that the property is gonna have only point forty-five meters between the houses.
Okay, what impact would it have on your property?
Uh, that would be the impact, that it's too narrow between the houses.
Okay. How far is your property from the lot line?
Um, I believe I have to the east about forty centimeters.
Forty centimeters?
From the line to the, sorry? Oh, no, sorry, my husband is saying here, from my house to the house, actual house now, at two-nine, at, to nine four-six, it's about three meters we have now, there's a driveway. Okay?
Okay.
Now, to the, my property line, to my home, it's about forty centimeters west. Is that what I'm saying?
How much?
I would say forty centimeters, point four. I believe that's the measurement.
Centimeters?
Yes.
Are you sure it's centimeters or meters?
Centimeters, I don't have four meters, forty centimeters. Point four, point four meters.
Okay, so, okay. All right, thank you, you have anything else?
No, that's my only.
Okay, all right, Mr. Navavati? Mr. Navavati?
I've given a presentation over there just to show, uh, as we go down the exhibits, that in exhibit F1, many properties in that vicinity have been given, uh, the same, the same variance as to the old setbacks as such. And if at all, the, my request is that if at all we can get it, it will be really very helpful to us. So even, even, uh, existing units with, even our, our unit is very close to an existing building on, to the west where the building has been given permission to be constructed at less than forty centimeters open space.
Okay.
It's right next to our building itself. If you look at this particular, uh, at exhibit number E, that particular building has been recently constructed a few years ago, and has been permitted to be as close to our property line. So that, that was the caveat for that.
Okay, panel, do you have any questions? Yes, Joanne?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, one question with respect to the height. What's the height of the, the property to the east, the newer build?
Yeah, it is a little more than ours, but it is, it is a pitched roof. It is just a little more, more than ours.
Okay, is there any flat roof buildings in that general vicinity that are at the height that you are requesting?
Yes, right behind us, so if you look at the exhibit that I have shown over there, right behind us, ten, ten Homestead Avenue is the one right behind us in exhibit F1. If you go to exhibit F1, you go down.
That's right behind the subject property?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
And how high is that?
That is exactly the same height as our building.
But that's a pitched roof.
Yes, so the thing is that, that particular pitch, no, I'm very sorry, forgive me. The thing is that that particular pitched roof is exactly the same height as the neighbor building, and our flat roof is lower than that.
Sorry, again, I'm sorry to stop.
Our flat roof is lower than this particular pitch height.
So this pitched roof is lower than your flat roof, or is higher than your flat roof?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Than proposed?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, any comments, or do we have a motion? Larry?
Chair, uh, I'll take this one, I, uh, yeah, this is a very major arterial road, and, um, I, I think can accommodate this kind of proposal. I didn't see anything that was untoward for the neighborhood or for the street. I appreciate the proximity issue with respect to the neighbor, but I'm, uh, I'm satisfied that other buildings are equally close to the lot line, and that the setback variance isn't all that dramatic. And I, the height issue, I was looking around the neighborhood, and while not on that little stretch of St. Clair, but seemingly adjacent streets, there are lots of examples of homes, not only two, but also three stories. So I didn't think this was out of character, so I'm, I'm prepared to support this application. I'll have a motion to approve it, um, subject to, I guess, do we have to do the severance on the, and the variances separately, Chair? Or would you like?
No, I think we can do them together.
Okay, then I'll move approval of the severance of this lot, and the variances, subject to engineering conditions, forestry number three for both of the new dwellings, and planning conditions with respect to screening, because Joanne is all over that one, uh, in the back.
Okay, we have a seconder? Joanne, all in favor? Have your approval, sir? Number forty, A, B, and C. Gotta find it. Sixty-two Earl's Dale Avenue, um, this is a consent to sever one lot into two undersized lots, and two variances, the, the purpose is to construct a new three-story detached dwelling with a front integral garage, a rear basement walkout, and a rear ground floor deck on the retained lot described in consent application BOO zero-zero five zero slash twenty-one TEY. And the, um, purpose of the other forty C is to construct a new three-story detached dwelling with front integral garage, a rear basement walkout, and a rear ground floor deck on the conveyed lot described in consent application BOO zero-zero five zero slash twenty-one TEY. And with this application, we have materials submitted by the applicant, email correspondence from engineering, and, uh, planning, and a staff report from community planning. Mr. Marchesi?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, fellow committee members, Chris Marchesi here, from Design Plan Services. Here on behalf of the property owners of sixty-two Earl's Dale Avenue to present information on this application here in front of you today.
Your address, sir?
Yep, address is nine hundred The East Mall, Suite three hundred.
All right, thank you, could you tell us about this application, sir?
Yeah, for sure, so I submitted a lot analysis to the committee prior to the deadline so they can have an understanding of the existing lotting fabric that exists in the neighborhood. Um, there are plenty of examples of lots that are smaller than what's being proposed here due to the severance. The applications for both lots are complying with the required lot area we have for this zone at two hundred, over two hundred and forty square meters. The frontage is proposed at six point nine nine meters. In regards to the frontage, I'd like to make it clear that right now, forty-five of the existing fifty-four lots are non-compliant with zoning regulations for frontage on this street. So it's an area that is characterized as small frontage with small setbacks existing. Um, the only discrepancy between the two applications that you'll see is that one of them has a height variance, where one does not. First and foremost in that regard, the height variance on the third floor, as seen on the side elevations, have the third floor that stepped in two point nine three meters from the front and two point eight six meters from the rear of the property. So basically from the street, you're gonna be looking at, at an elevation that where you can't see the third story, appears to be a two-story dwelling, and is complying with the overall height and exterior from main wall height up to that second story. Uh, the difference in increase in height is just because there is a, a minor increase in the grade of the street. So the finished grade on both properties is, is a touch different. So that's why on part two, you see a minor height variance, because we are manipulating the finished grade on the property, we would just be maintaining the finished grade. So you're gonna see a little increase in height, but we're talking just over thirty centimeters, nothing major or something that's gonna be noticeable, especially the fact that it stepped back two point nine three meters from the front main wall of the two-story below the third story. Uh, in regards to the side yard setbacks being proposed, as I previously mentioned, it's an area that's characterized of small side yard setbacks. Through doing a research request, I find, I found approximately fifty variances just in the last ten years, and that doesn't show what's been existing for more than ten years or legally non-conforming. Fifty variances with a setback variance of zero point three meters or less. So that is very consistent with what's going on in the neighborhood and, and what's already on the ground there. And then in regards to a minor FSI increase, we're talking about fifty square meters or a hundred and sixty square feet, which is broken up into three floors, so you're looking at about fifty-five square feet per floor, which is extremely minor, won't create any adverse impact massing on the street or the street state. And based on that provided justification, I am of the opinion that the consent and minor variances meet the criteria for fifty-one twenty-four of the planning act, as well as forty-one of the planning act for the minor variances. And I am of the opinion that this applicant, these applications should be approved as in front of you today. One last thing I would like to note is that I reviewed all the staff reports, and find all conditions put forward by planning staff and other departments acceptable if the committee were to approve this application here in front of you today. Um, that's all I have to add on this application, but I will be happy to answer any questions from the committee members, if there are any, thank you.
Committee, any, any, panel, any questions? Okay, Mr. Cartwright?
Thirty seconds remaining.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Um, Mr. Cartwright, uh, left the committee room earlier. Uh, I tried to call him back, but I don't think it's working, so.
Okay, so, um, we're taking, so since Mr. Cartwright isn't here, we don't need to hear from you again, Mr. Marchese, unless we have some questions. So we're going to go into committee now. Uh, are there any questions or comments, or, uh, do we have a motion? Yes, Joanne?
Thank you. Um, I think that, uh, first of all, thank you to the applicant for providing a lot study that, that, uh, provides a lot of good information with respect to the lotting pa- patterns in the neighborhood. Um, I, that clearly demonstrated that the, although this lot would be undersized, it certainly is not uncharacteristic of, of the neighborhood. Um, I think the variant, the variances required, um, to allow for the construction are, are, are minor in nature, and I would be in support of the severance and the variances. If, and if my colleagues have no further questions, I'll move a motion, or, I mean, I'll move a motion. So, uh, move a motion to approve the consent application subject to standard, uh, um, consent conditions outlined by Development Engineering, and approve the variance applications subject to the, uh, conditions outlined in the planning review. As I believe that both the consent and the variances meet the tests under the Planning Act.
All right, thank you. We have a second, or? Larry? All in favor? Have your approval, sir. Thank you. Number forty-one. Eighty Indian Grove, and the purpose of this application is to construct a new fourplex and a new detached garage. With this application, we have materials submitted by the applicant, email correspondence from, uh, Urban Forestry and Transportation Services, and a report from Urban Forestry. Opposition from various addresses on Indian Grove and Indian Trail. Mr. Demzak?
Good evening, members.
Uh, we can't hear you, sir.
Can you, can you hear me now?
No, a little louder. Please speak into your device.
Good evening, members of the committee, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, my name is Paul Demczek. Uh, I am a planning consultant on behalf of the applicant for eighty Indian Grove.
And your address, sir?
Six five five Anne Street.
Thank you. Please tell us about this, uh, application, because there is opposition.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I will give a brief background and then, and then specifically you speak to some of the variances. Um, so the subject property is located within the high pop neighborhood, um, and is an existing two and a half story home that has been utilized as a four-unit dwelling for, uh, a number of years. Um, on November seventeenth, um, twenty twenty, this application was presented before this committee, uh, that proposed to reconstruct a four-unit dwelling on the subject property in a more modern architectural fashion, uh, which requests a number of variances to the bylaws. Um, at that committee meeting, the committee received a number of letters of objection from nearby residents, as well as a letter of recommenda- recommended deferral from the planning department. The application was deferred by the committee, uh, to provide my client an opportunity to work with nearby residents, um, and, uh, and potentially modify the proposal. Uh, so I would like to just walk the committee, uh, through a brief overview of some of the meetings that were held and, uh, some of the major modifications that have taken place since that time. So an initial neighborhood meeting was conducted on, uh, November twenty-sixth, uh, twenty twenty. At this meeting, we heard a number of concerns from residents, um, including, uh, comments related to the proposed, uh, building fitting into the neighborhood, concerns of the new apartment building being proposed, concerns regarding the proposed roofline and height, concerns of building materiality, privacy and overlook, loss of mature tree and canopy coverage, uh, the front yard setback, and rear yard parking and loss of landscape among others. Um, my client, since that time, has worked diligently with myself, uh, the architect team, um, and City of Toronto planning staff on resolving a number of these issues. A subsequent second meeting was held on May fifth of two thousand twenty-one, uh, with residents. And at this second residents' working group, a revised design was presented to the residents, uh, to show these modifications that were made to the design and address, uh, a number of those concerns. Um, that subsequent, uh, meeting submission is, uh, was then subsequently submitted to the city and is back before the committee this evening. So I'd like to walk the committee through the revised proposal and how we have, uh, a number of those concerns and comments. So, um, as an update, um, as part of the application submission, an affidavit from, um, uh, my client, the property owner, um, and the property owner's legal representative was submitted, uh, which confirms that the dwelling has been operated as a four-unit dwelling prior to, uh, January twelfth, nineteen eighty-seven, uh, which is part of the, um, uh, exemption provisions under the bylaw. The footprint of the dwelling has been modified, um, to essentially, uh, seek, try to mirror the footprint of the existing dwelling. This provides a greater front yard setback, which is generally aligned with the neighboring, uh, buildings. The reduced footprint also provides an opportunity to protect, uh, the existing mature black oak tree, which is located at the rear of the existing dwelling, um, essentially at the, the northwest corner, um, of the, uh, the dwelling. Originally, a four-car garage was proposed at the rear of the property. This has been reduced to a two-vehicle garage, which eliminates the previously requested variance, uh, to the proposed garage, and also increases landscaping and rear yard amenities space opportunities. Um, a height survey was completed by my client, which examined the heights of adjacent properties and along the street scape of Indian Grove. The height survey demonstrates an appropriate, um, uh, height of the proposed dwelling within the context of the immediate neighborhood and within the immediate street scape. Specifically, the proposed height is less than the height of the adjacent dwelling to the north. It provides a compatible height transition to the adjacent, uh, dwelling to the south. Um, in terms of the, the massing and architecture, um, I'll start with the front elevation. Um, so the original design, uh, as I mentioned, was a modern architectural interpretation. This has been significantly modified to a typical pitched roof that is common, found within the neighborhood. A front porch and large bay window was added to the front elevation, which are also common features found within the immediate neighborhood. And red brick and wood siding details are proposed, which are common materials that are also found. My client is also seeking to pursue a passive house design and certification, uh, for the building. In terms of the rear elevation, uh, proposed balconies have been significantly reduced from the original design. So the original architecture of the home included balconies that extended essentially, um, across the entirety of the, uh, the rear elevation. Uh, these have been reduced, uh, significantly, as well as side balcony screening elements are proposed to mitigate potential privacy and overlook impact concerns on, on adjacent properties. Um, the overall number of variances as part of this application and revised application, sorry, has been reduced. Um, and while I've commented on, I guess many of it, I'll highlight just a few of the balance items, which I've not yet specifically addressed. Um, for the dwelling depth, we are proposing an increase of the, of the depth from what the bylaw permits. Um, it should be noted that the existing building on the property, um, has a dwelling depth of, uh, just over sixteen meters, and we are proposing a slight increase to that. And I will also note that the adjacent properties also have a dwelling depth that is similar to the proposed, uh, build form and development. Further, the proposed dwelling depth only applies to the first two stories and provides a step back on the third story, um, which is similar in scale to the northern neighboring, uh, dwelling. The additional dwelling depth is not subject to creating a mapping, uh, that's out of character with the area.
Mr. Demzak, Mr. Demzak, your, your time has been up for about a minute and a half, but would you, I know you're not quite finished. Would you please wind up as quickly as you can?
Absolutely. I, I just want to highlight one, uh, critical piece related to the, I guess, the proposed fourplex. I would suggest to the committee that this is a, a technical variance in nature. Um, as, as discussed, uh, not only in terms of the affidavit that was submitted, um, showing that this is an existing building, but analysis was completed in the context of the immediate neighborhood, um, and this was submitted, um, as part of the submission. So in total, a total of twenty-four lots were examined within the immediate context of the neighborhood. Um, the existing four-unit dwelling is one of nine properties that have two or more units. Um, and a total of three units, uh, three properties, sorry, are, are four-unit styled ones, uh, within this immediate, uh, context. Um, I, just, just to wrap up here, I will note that we received a letter of support from Toronto Urban Forestry. Um, we've had positive dialogue with planning staff, um, and we also have noted that, um, Transportation Services has supported the reduction in parking. Um, I'm, I'm here before the committee and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, panel, do you have any questions? Okay, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Wiley?
Yep.
Yep, we're here.
Okay, can one of you speak?
Yep, we're the neighbors immediately to the north, that eighty-six Indian Grove. There's no immediate neighboring, we're.
Okay, can, can, can you speak a little closer to your device and, and just give us your name for the record?
Dave Wiley, eighty-six Indian Grove.
Yes.
Just immediately to the north. Um, we still have concerns with the overall depth of the property and impacts to the mature red oak in the rear of the property. I don't think I read that letter from Urban Forestry the same way. Um, it says it is still subject to approval by Urban Forestry, not that it's, uh, an approval. We also have concerns about the increased hardscaping in the backyard, um, on a slope and creating flooding issues with our adjacent property. The grades do slightly step as you move to the north. Um, and in terms of the, the meetings with the neighbors, I believe this was already posted to the city website prior to the, uh, prior to the fifth, when we met with the group. So I think the, the, a bit of a mischaracterization, and I think there's still strong opposition to the, uh, massing of the property and, uh, the front and rear setbacks.
Okay, are those your comments, sir?
Yes, those are the main comments. I have other comments for the building department.
Do, do, uh, any panel members have questions? Nope, okay. Ms. Prochaski, Prochaska?
Through you, Mr. Chair, uh, that person is not going to attend a hearing.
Okay. All right, Mr. Demzak?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just the first comment regarding the concerns with the, uh, the proposed tree. Um, so it is our understanding that, um, in discussions with Urban Forestry, um, they are in agreement with our approach to dealing with the tree. Um, the, our, our neighboring resident is absolutely correct that we still need to go through an approval process with them. Um, but essentially, we have come up with our, with our arborist to basically, um, work and hand dig around that tree to mitigate any potential impacts and protect it to the, to the best of the client's ability. Um, we obviously still have work to do with the arborist to, to file, is that approval? In terms of the, um, the overall dwelling depth, um, again, I will note that the dwelling depth is not out of character with, with what is seen, um, within the immediate context of the neighborhood. Uh, specifically, the dwelling depth does not exceed the dwelling depth, um, that is existing to the property to the south. Um, and as mentioned, to mitigate any potential impacts, uh, related to, um, overlook and, and privacy concerns, we have, um, we have put in privacy screening on, on all of the balconies, uh, to, to mitigate, uh, to mitigate those, those impacts. Uh, the final comment I will note is the concerns related to the rear yard, um, landscaping and amenities. Um, as mentioned, we have reduced the, uh, the garage, uh, space and area, uh, to further, um, allow for improvement in space and landscaping opportunities, um, uh, to the benefit of, of obviously the residents, um, that, uh, that are currently there, but also look for, uh, for the future of the, the development.
Okay. So. All right, so panel, do you have any questions? Okay, go into committee. And Larry, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I'll start, uh, in part because I, uh, was, uh, I recall this application when it came forward to committee a year ago, and I read all the letters I recall, uh, from that, uh, occasion when it was deferred, and I've read them all again. And I recall that application, and, uh, there was great deal of concern amongst the committee about the design, the size. Uh, I, I think, uh, this revised proposal does, uh, a really good job and has gone a long way to modify and make changes. Um, you know, you may not necessarily please everyone, but it just seems to me that, uh, based on what was originally proposed and what they've come forward with now, um, this application is substantially different, substantially, in my view, better. Um, I would note, um, that this, uh, location is five-minute walk away from the Keel subway station. It is an established neighborhood. I think the overall intent of the official plan is to introduce the entity where we can into, uh, existing neighborhoods. Uh, this seems to be, um, uh, uh, um, a, a reasonable approach to doing that, and I take from the applicant is, uh, his point about this being a four-unit, uh, uh, dwelling now for some time. Um, I, I think it's, uh, you know, uh, I, I suspect that whatever is proposed to the site is like to, uh, raise some opposition from the neighborhood, no matter what they do. Um, but I'm, um, in my view, this is a significantly, significant improvement from the original one, and one that is, um, given the materials, the design, and the height, and all the various, uh, and since I think is, is a modern, um, uh, dwelling, which is trying to at least fit into an established neighborhood. So, um, I'll, I will be, uh, supporting this application.
Okay, and, yes, Yim?
Uh, I want to add that I, I was also, uh, uh, remember that at the original, uh, the previous hearing, and I remember the, uh, uh, the original proposed, and I compared to what's been changed. It is a significant improvement, especially in the main wall height. It reduces by almost eight feet. And I think that they, they have put in an effort to add to the work of the community, although it's saying you cannot please everybody. And I, 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 I'm also in support of it also, because I think that it's gone a long way over here to improve and try to make this.
Joanne, do you have any comments? No?
So I'm, I'm happy to move a motion to approve this one, Chair. Um, I, I don't think there are any conditions other than Forestry number two.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
All right, do we have a second, or? Yeah, Yim? All right, all in favor? Got your approval, sir. Thank you. Number forty-two, five twelve Bathurst Street. Purpose of this application is to convert the existing two and a half-story detached dwelling into a three-story fourplex by constructing a rear three-story addition, a rear ground floor deck, and rear second and third story balcony. With this application, we have materials submitted by the applicant and correspondence and support from three twenty-three Markham Street. Mr. Crowley?
Sorry, through you, through you, Mr. Chair, we also.
through you, Mr. Chair. We also have correspondence and support from five five nine Bathurst Street.
Right. Thank you. Mr. Krilly?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and committee members. My name is Bill Krilly. I'm a resident of line zero four Gray Street.
Alright, um, so perhaps you could, I, I don't want a full presentation, but could, perhaps you could give us a brief summary of what's going on here?
Sure, sure. And, and we, um, we, uh, we're through an SBA process earlier, uh, for twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Um, but we rejigged our application, um, and, uh, reduced it from a, a four unit, sorry, an eight unit proposal to a four unit, sort of fourplex. Um, and really the, the objective here is to, uh, to take a tired, you know, rental property and, and improve it and to and increase the density, uh, on the property. Uh, we are in, in, um, we're within the bylaw when it comes to, uh, overall GFI. Um, existing height of the building is, uh, ten and a half meters. So we're seeking to really square up the, the rooms on the third floor to, uh, improve the, the size of the third floor, uh, unit. Um, the overall depth of the, of the building is currently at, um, eighteen point nine five meters. There's a rear shed addition, um, that's shown and really we're seeking to square up the back of the property and add, um, some, some, um, square footage on the, the main and second floor. Um, so really it's a, uh, a couple of the variances around, uh, height. I think that's variance four, uh, around the sidewall height, uh, variance five. Really stick to the existing height of the, the peak, uh, the front of the building. Um, we did submit a couple of, um, renderings of the, the front and the rear, just to give you a better, um, understanding of what it is that we, um, intend to do. There we go. So, it's really keeping in, um, line with the existing front facade with some, uh, improvements and then the, the rear addition, uh, providing, um, ample light and indoor space for each of the, uh, the four rental units. Um, so the projection of the, the back is consistent with other properties, uh, not part of Bathurst and also, uh, uh, Markham Street to the rear. So we have reached out to several neighbors. Um, really the, the neighbors that, uh, submitted, um, letters of support, the ones we actually, uh, were able to, to connect with. Um, others were, were not able to, uh, actually have a, some conversation about our proposed plans. Um, the properties to the south are both multi-unit. Uh, there's three properties in a row. There are multi-unit, uh, dwellings, rental dwellings. Uh, the property to the north is, uh, it's a single point dwelling. Um, but we haven't, uh, had any, um, opposition to our, to our plans from our neighbors to the, to the north, five twelve. That's my, that's my, uh, overview. I'm happy to take any questions in regard to the variances.
So I wanted to ask, um, is this a, a classified as an apartment building?
Uh, it's, uh, it's currently a, a three unit residential building. Um, I, under the, the application we made, uh, over a year ago, uh, we were seeking, um, approval for an eight unit building, which would have been classified as an apartment building. But when we changed our application, changed the design, our proposal, uh, it fits within a, a fourplex, uh, so it's, wouldn't be under a, an apartment building, uh, designation, definition.
Okay, so variance number one says the new apartment building will be ten point five meters. Is that left over from your last application?
Yeah, I think, I think what we're looking at on the screen right now is, uh, from a year ago. Or sorry, earlier this year, in February twenty twenty-one.
Okay, so apartment should be deleted. Is that correct?
No, I think the screen, the, the document we're looking at right now is from the previous application to the committee. We, we deferred.
Oh, this is the application we have now, I believe.
No, that's the extract from the minutes, I think, Chair.
This is-
It's reading in my agenda. It's the, it's the, it's the variance before us.
Oh, I'm sorry. My mistake.
Yeah, that's what I, so anyways, uh, just to be accurate, we have to cross out the word apartment building of variance number one. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I, I- Because the last one we had was an apartment building. This one is-
Right.
Is, is a fourplex, which is different. Okay, uh, panel, do you have any other questions? Okay. Go into committee and, and, um, any comments or, uh, a motion? Yes, Joanne?
Hey, um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I think that what's being, um, proposed now versus the initial application, um, is, uh, is an improvement. Um, um, we don't have any comments now from planning, so I would suggest that they don't have any concerns with it. The depth is indeed existing, although now it's not, you know, the whole height that they're requesting. Um, I think that the, the location, uh, the parking variance is reasonable. The floor area variance is reasonable. The height is not uncharacteristic. And, um, and I would be in support of the application and I do not believe there are any conditions being requested. And if my colleagues have no further comment, that would be my motion.
Alright, thank you. Do we have a second, sir? Yes, Yim? All in favor? Have your approval, sir.
And I would just say to your point, Mr. Chair, taking out that word apartment in variance one.
Yes, thank you. Um, number forty-three. Ninety-eight Saint Hubert. Purpose of the application is to construct a two story detached dwelling with an integral garage, a covered porch, a rear deck, a rear basement walkout and a rear second floor balcony. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant. We have email correspondence from planning and from transportation and we have a report from planning and we have six form letters in support. And we have, uh, correspondence and concern or interest from one seventeen Cardoma Avenue. Uh, Mr. Mastandrea?
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Leo. My name is Leo Mastandrea. I'm, I'm at, uh, eight one seven Cosburn Avenue.
Okay. Um, Mr. Mas- Mastandrea, um, just, just a very quick, just tell us about this because you have eight variances.
Um, yes, so we deferred our application, um, due to concerns from the forestry. Um, we have, uh, resolved, uh, those concerns. They now support our application. Um, the, the, uh, planning had no concerns. We addressed all, we addressed their concerns and they had a condition to provide, um, screening on our balconies, which I have no problem to agree with. Um, I believe our variances are consistent with what's been approved at the committee. Um, I'd like to just, uh, send you to my supporting material. Um, number, page number one, where it shows the, um, coverage all, um, um, some on Saint Hubert and some behind on Cardona. And then they are, um, consistent to what we're asking for. On page number two, um, this is, uh, consistent with the FSI, the building height and the main wall height. And on page number three is actually our neighbor next door, which is almost identical to what we're asking for. We have adjacent, um, support from our adjacent neighbors. And I believe this is appropriate and it doesn't meet the four tests.
Okay, panel, do you have any questions? No? Okay. Uh, Yim?
Uh, yes, I can slide a variance of maybe, um, of, uh, materials and then hopefully the longest of variance, um, eight. But I close with them. I consider it, uh, minor and you need the four tests. And I would like if I move on, move on, then privacy screening on the second floor. That, that's my motion.
Okay. Do we have a second, sir? Larry, all in favor? Joanne, uh, you have your approval, sir. Thank you. We'll just take this one down.